The first item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. I'll move it.
Second?
Second by Bittenger, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. Items two through seven constitute a consent agenda of routine action items to be considered by one motion. Items pass unanimously unless a separate vote is requested by a board member. Item two is approval of the minutes of the July thirtieth meeting. Item three is approval of the claims. Item four from secondary roads includes A, approval of the underground utility permit for Western Iowa Telephone, and B, approval of the underground utility permit for long lines except for the portion of the requests involving the placement of fiber on two hundred thirty-fifth Street, Barker Avenue, and Banner Avenue in the vicinity of the new interchange project. And item five from the county auditor is approval of liquor license application for Woodbury County Fair in Millville, which was a great success, as the fair goes. And item six in human resources includes A, approval of memorandum of personnel transactions, B, authorization to initiate the hiring process, C, approval of the twenty twenty-four annual health and wellness fair, D, approval to provide free flu shots to Woodbury County employees, E, approval to provide wellness screenings and continued quarterly individual health coaching to eligible Woodbury County employees, and F, approve the renewal of employee and family resources as our employee assistance provider. And item seven from the Board of Supervisors submitted by Mr. Nelson, as discussed, presented to the board earlier, is approval to postpone the Salix strain as district hearing until December second, twenty twenty-four. Any questions?
Just one, Mr. Chair. So Mark, I assume that that's set the request to Salix. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll move the consent agenda.
Second.
Second by Nelson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. Item eight from planning and zoning, Mr. Priestley, includes A for action to receive the final report in the zoning commission's recommendation from their July twenty-second meeting to approve the final plat of Sandport addition, a minor subdivision to Woodbury County.
Yes, Supervisor Dan Priestley, the Woodbury County Zoning Commission send you their recommendation for this one lot, nine point six-six acre parcel. It's down by twenty-six eighty-three Port Neal Road. They looked through all the criteria and they recommend approval.
I'll move proceed. Motion by Raddick, second by Bittenger, hearing no discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. Item B is approval of the same. I'll move that. I'll second the motion by Raddick. Any discussion or questions?
That one went through pretty cleanly. It's right down there. They likely might use it for a construction contractor yard. It's in the industrial area. The city of Salix had waived it as well for their review.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. Thank you. Item nine from secondary roads is to award the quotation for concrete patching to Subsurface Incorporated for one hundred sixty-five thousand, one hundred sixteen dollars.
Second.
Well, it's already seconded. A motion by Rag, second by Taylor. You would get that motion, Mr. Raddick. Any questions, concerns on saving money? No. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five zero. Thank you. All right, moving on to item ten from the Board of Supervisors submitted by myself. This is approval to direct human resources to draft a memorandum of understanding to the Ask Me Assistant County Attorney Collective Bargaining Agreement to address understaffing. This item is brought forward out of necessity. There is a prosecutor vacancy crisis affecting the nation at this point. I think you can point to a lot of different things. Not all of them have to do with wages and benefits, although that's certainly part of it. Perhaps the prestige of being a prosecutor and standing up for right and wrong is not in vogue in today's society, but that's a subject for another day. We have a situation in our county where we are down eight assistant county attorney positions. And this is the deepest deficit we've had in the last couple of years and certainly since Mr. Loomis has assumed office. The board took decisive action and signed an MOU to try to address this, and it looked positive. But the proof is in the pudding and the open positions are still open, and we have one additional open at this point. We need to be creative with our compensation package and look at not only wages and benefits, but work-life balance and the like. And so bear with me as I go through this. This is a result of a meeting I requested with the union. Appreciate their involvement and Melissa as well, our HR director. I wanted to get ahead of this before bringing this to the board for another MOU proposal because I want to make sure that the board is advised of what the union members see are issues so that we don't get ahead of ourselves and agree to something that has unintended consequences. So with that, I do want to briefly note that attached to this, mostly for anyone that has pure interest, is an over fifty-page article that Mr. Loomis shared with us earlier, an academic article about the issue at hand nationally. And so if anyone has any questions about whether this is really an issue, please just refer to that. It covers it a lot better than I could summarize. So we had this roundtable meeting and what's being suggested today for action is to approve Melissa to work with legal counsel to craft an MOU. That would be the motion. And as before, completed MOU would come before the board for final approval and discussion. But ahead of that, to be transparent, these are the items that I foresee being drafted pursuant to board discussion. And I will say that these have been discussed with these people at this roundtable. And I believe the representative, I asked if there was anything outside of this that was requested or thought of that had been communicated to me or Melissa before this meeting. And I think it is at this point conclusive of that. And they have agreed to attend today and answer any of the board's questions as well, which I also appreciate. So the different pieces here to consider are this. Number one, first of all, we want to do something that fairly impacts new, existing, and the most tenured employees, which is always very difficult mid-contract. First proposal is to remove steps one and two from the wage matrix of the current twelve, making our current step three the starting point for compensation. In effect, this would also give the county attorney discretion to start a new attorney at step ten instead of the current step eight. But of course, it would remain step eight of the new matrix. It'd be one through ten. The reason for this is simply to incentivize new hires. The compensation level is competitive at this point. We've been told that. However, again, the proof is in the pudding and we have eight open positions. And I'm not okay with that. I believe no one on this board is okay with that. And we need to bring forward something that works in practice, not just in theory. It seemed really good what we did earlier. We made a meaningful wage increase. We advanced the effective date of the contract. We increased sign-on bonus, but those have not had any real effect. So that would impact new attorneys. Number two is changing the intervals in steps from one year to six months in duration to increase compensation more quickly. This is very aggressive. Currently, this union advances every year. They go up a step. The proposal is to make this happen twice as fast. The reason for this is it is very difficult to have new hires remain and continue to advance up and be retained as prosecutors. And perhaps looking at something coming every six months is an incentive that is not already there. Three is to, three and four regard vacation. And this is a very challenging situation, particularly for this bargaining unit because, you know, these are professionals. They deal with felonies in this, in the felony attorney cases, well in excess of a hundred felonies as far as a backlog per attorney. This is becoming almost insurmountable over time. And any vacation that is given up, the county attorney was complimented in this meeting where he would give back this vacation that was lost. The problem is when you're, when you're out in these positions, your work on your current cases continues to build up. And any cases, new cases that go to the other attorneys back in the office, when you come back to make it fair, the new cases have to come to you. And so this makes it almost no incentive to take vacation. And some of those I spoke to intentionally do not, just for the good of the office or because they feel like they're going to fall behind. So how do you incentivize people that are, there is potential burnout in this group? How do you do that? One idea that was brought forth by Ben, you know, representing the union here today, was to include attorney days. In effect, these would be used as personal days that would be forfeited at the end of the fiscal year, and there'd be five of them. This would be a week of de facto vacation that new hires could also be presented with two weeks instead of one week. We're trying to get attorneys that in many cases are coming from private practice where they built up several weeks vacation, and that is simply not the reality with Woodbury County. And one week did not move the needle. The other point four addresses how do you incentivize those that are disincentivized from taking their own vacation? And that is to periodically, it could be any period of time, but in this case, each six months based on the hire anniversary date, the attorneys will have the option of cashing in any vacation that is accrued but are unable to use. This would have to be, the maximum for each attorney would be beyond their annual accrual limit that they couldn't otherwise carry over. This is important because if you are in a position where you are at step twelve, you're a faithful employee, you have a backlog of a hundred fifty felonies, and there's, there's, you don't see a light at the end of the tunnel because when you take vacation, it just piles up on you. What is going to get you through and allow you to stay with the county until these new hires come on? And that's going to be some sort of incentive. Vacation apparently cannot be used as an incentive when it's not taken. And so for the, for the, for the trial and the inconvenience of that, what if you could cash it in and get some sort of a performance bonus for your hard work and remaining with the organization? Item five is to allow up to one day per week of remote work at the county attorney's discretion. And this would track the approval process that vacation hours track. This apparently is very important to this bargaining unit. And is something that was explained to me was, was and has been done without ill effect, particularly during COVID, when there was some work from home activity. And unless you're physically presenting, in a lot of cases, you can get a lot of your work done. They do use secure devices. There wouldn't need to be any more capital outlays for this. This is just something that would depend upon the work schedule and the caseload and potentially be something that's, for example, a Friday thing whenever it works. This is more important to some than others. Some probably wouldn't take this. Some would not have the opportunity to take this every week. And that's just something everyone's going to have to deal with, the reality of working through this. But it's something that I've spoken about with the county attorney. And this and the other item, item six, I don't know, sorry, this and the item before it, item four, is proposed to sunset when there is a staffing level of very close to full staffing, which would be seventeen out of eighteen budgeted attorneys, and that includes the county attorney. So this is not something that necessarily is going to be part of the, you know, we don't want this to be seen as, I don't want this to be seen at this point, and the board can correct me if I'm wrong, as something that we're going to extend wholesale to every bargaining unit, wage plan employee as an expectation, but recognizing the security of these devices and the fact that at, at times, there is the potential to get this work done without the interruptions of, of phone calls and walk-ins, given the backlog. No other department is dealing with a backlog like this of such importance. And again, this is something that is not, isn't, we're not asking for a luxury here. This is a, this is a public safety issue. This is, this is a public justice issue. It may not matter to someone listening, but if injustice is done to you and you need justice locally, there's a backlog of over a hundred cases per prosecutor that's going to seek justice for you, and that's not acceptable. Item six is to extend the three thousand dollar sign-on bonus for one year from the point of the effective date of the current contract, which is July one. This is generous beyond the fifteen hundred that we have. This is paid out after one year of employment. And the proposal is to extend this not for the length of, of the MOU or the contract, but for another year. As a, just the high, getting the hires in the door is the most important point, thing at this point. Financial impact is listed in the next section. Basically, to boil this down, there is a lot of unspent funds in the county attorney's budget for the obvious reason that there are eight out of eighteen positions are vacant. We're taxing for that. We're not spending that. And so that is what is going to be funding this for the next, for this current fiscal year. Next fiscal year would obviously have to adjust. But in the short term, for the next, for a year, this is, this is, that's where these funds would be coming from. This is always sort of tenuous when we bring up MOUs because there's so many unintended consequences that could happen, but to not go through this process, I don't know how we could not go through this process because we have, if we lose one more attorney, half of the attorney's office is vacant. Who's going to prosecute crimes? I mean, it's a real question. And the answer is in an MOU at this point. This is practically how we address this. This is what I'm saying. It came about after a ninety-minute meeting. I'm thankful for those that attended that meeting for attending today. I would invite, unless the county attorney would like to make a comment, I would like to invite those that came to be open and willing to field any questions from other board members at this point. James?
I think I'll go ahead and let the attorneys talk first, Mr. Chair.
Good afternoon. My name's Ben Eggersall. I represent Logol thirty-four sixty-two, which includes the assistant county attorneys for Woodbury County. I do the west half of the state of Iowa. As Mr. Young has said, the last two to three years has just been catastrophic for the department, and the workload has just exploded. These items here, we are not simply looking to throw money at a prod, at a problem. We're looking at improving work-life balance, which seems to be what is wearing on the attorneys is just the maximum overload. So these are fairly non-money objects to vote on, and we're hoping it'll get people in the door and resolve burnout on seasoned, experienced attorneys that remain. Does anybody have any questions for me? All right, thank you.
Before you speak, Mr. Taylor, one more thing I forgot to mention. There is, so there's the new employees, current employees that are not fully tenured and the fully tenured employees. This does benefit the, there's three, apparently three attorneys that are between the bottom and the top step, which would be immediately impacted by this. If we, if we move forward with increasing the step frequency from one year to six months, all three of those would be at this point more than six months into their work anniversary, and so therefore would enjoy a bump as well. And the step situation was discussed with a lot of detail is do we, you know, do we take off more steps? Do we reduce the number of steps? Do we manipulate the amount per step? And just to be as even-handed as possible, increasing the frequency that they take effect is really, it seemed to be the path of least resistance. Also, with the attorney, county attorney's ability to hire up to step eight, with there being ten steps, if the county attorney is able to find someone with eight years' experience, eight years of experience and hire them at step eight, his offer can be in one year, you're going to be at the top, you know, at the top, given that experience. So it's very compelling. But again, it only matters if it works in, in practice. And so that's why this is an aggressive and comprehensive proposal. Did you have something, Mr. Taylor?
Yeah, I was going to ask a question or two. I think you may have just answered it though, so. First off, I just wanted to compliment you because challenging problems like this require intricate and creative solutions and a lot of dialogue. And I think that is reflective of what we're seeing today. My question, and I think you've answered it now, removing, it says removing steps one and two from the matrix, so everyone would start at step three. And then I guess I was just confused by starting a new attorney at step eight, but I think you just explained that based on the county attorney's discretion, he could say your experience, the measure it was starting at eight or nine or ten. And so that would be up to the county attorney. Is that, did I hear you correctly on that?
Yes, as long as they have the experience.
Right. Okay.
And that's obviously important to make sure that is documented because that is a, it's a big, big difference there.
So then next year, somebody who was on step one would be essentially on step four? Is that, am I following this correctly? Because that person would have gone from one to two. And I know some of the devil may be in the details, and I'm, I'm supportive either way. I just want to make sure that some of those things are, are considered, if that makes sense.
So currently, there's no one in step one or two.
Okay.
Which is, is, is helpful, so.
Okay. Very good. Thank you very much. One last question, sorry. Will this MOU ultimately come back before the board or is approval today?
Yes.
Okay.
It has to come back.
Okay. That's all I got.
I'll go ahead and move this approval.
Second.
Motion by Rag, second by Taylor. Any further discussion from the board?
Thanks for your work on this.
Appreciate it. Any more comments from Melissa? Did I miss anything? Or if there's something that this causes heartburn with anyone in the room, I, please let us know because we're going to start crafting this tomorrow, and we want to make sure that it's as good as it can be. James?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've just put forth just a few comments. First, my office is working very hard without complaint. They've taken on a lot. And they're to be commended for their hard work, and I appreciate it. It's just challenging. You know, when I first got elected, the issue was before me. And I presented what I thought was a path forward. There were things that hadn't been done for a long time and that needed to be done. And so I worked to get those things kind of moving in the right direction, and I still feel that things are moving in the right direction. I will just tell you from a standpoint of sheer numbers, some of this is just circumstances that, with the people that we brought in, just due to family circumstances and burnout, for one in particular, that they needed to do different things and, and make some different changes. And so I'm certainly appreciative of the thought that the attorneys in my office are overworked. The felony attorneys, all of them have over one hundred cases. I haven't looked recently, but it's fair to say that they're probably close to a hundred and twenty or so. And to me, that is really unacceptable when you think about the work that an individual felony case takes. I want that number to be around forty to sixty, and we're double that. The misdemeanor attorneys, I will tell you that, again, I don't know what the numbers are, but you know, it's easy to, for me to say that they're probably all dealing with well over probably three hundred cases together collectively right now at any one point in time. And so it, it's just, it's a lot. My philosophy for, for hiring people, I will just be frank, has been picky. And I want the right people in this office. I just don't want bodies. Bodies don't solve the problem. Bodies just create problems down the road. And so I will be upfront and tell this board that when I make a hiring decision, it's because I've thought through very clearly what I think this individual brings to the office, not just because they're a body that may or may not be able to do the job. And so that's my philosophy, and that's what I've done. And so ultimately, I am supportive of all of the proposals that have been discussed. Some of them I'm more supportive of than others. But for the season that my office is in right now and the challenges that we face, I am supportive of all of them. And appreciative of you, Chairman An, for initiating this, and appreciative to those folks in my office for sitting down and talking with you about the things that our office is facing.
Thank you for those comments. I did want to mention one more thing regarding the fiscal impact since cost is, is front and center in probably the, any news story on this. As I mentioned before, there is no fiscal impact this fiscal year that we can foresee due to the understaffing that's existed and the fact that they've turned over so much to reserves. Next year, though, there will be a fiscal impact with new hires assumed. The comparison here is, well, obviously, doing nothing is not an option. Having almost half of the office vacant is not an option. So do you do this or do you do another route? The other route that Melissa and I pursued, and I know Mr. Loomis has done his own homework on this, is I think the term is like an employment agency, something like that, that, that seeks out for you on contract rates attorneys from other areas and makes offers they can't refuse, just to be quite honest with everybody. This is a more costly option. So the cost we're looking at here, when we, when we talk about the new hire of a, of a step one attorney being at seven thousand, seven hundred eighty-five dollars more is less than half of the cost that we researched and found it would cost to source one attorney using an outside agency. And so that's important for the public to understand. This is the more conservative option. This puts the money directly into the employee's pocket rather than, well, putting more in the employee's pocket and paying more than double to an agency.
So this is more cost-effective?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I appreciate it.
And I would just add to that, Mr. Chair, that when I, I did check into that, and I was essentially told that she cannot help me because as it works out, they basically leverage people until they get to a point where they can't say no. And obviously, we're dealing with a union contract and those, that's a kind of a barrier to a blank check. And there's just not a situation where we have a blank check. And so when I did inquire about that, like I said, And so when I did inquire about that, like I said, I was basically said, told politely, I cannot help you. And so that was, that was a dead end road on my part, but it was a road that I had gone down just to see if that was an option that was feasible or available.
Any other comments?
Have there been exit interviews for the office as they resign or move on?
Yes, I always talk to everyone about that. And what I would tell you without going into too much detail regarding that situation. So the three most recent folks that are not with the office anymore, two of which were family health-related reasons. One specifically needed the opportunity to be closer to his, to his family because of the health situation that his family was dealing with, the most recent of which took a different position because of significant health issues that she was facing and the stress associated with the job. She believed that taking a different position would help alleviate some of those health issues that she was facing. And then the third was, I'm going to call it a burnout and wanting to do something beyond and something different than what I needed him to do based on what my office's needs are. And, and so ultimately, those, those are the reasons I talked with them. And those were the explanations that they told me when I had a discussion with them. None of them had anything derogatory or negative to say about the office or the folks in the office. It, they were just personal reasons, like I said, two for mostly health reasons and one for burnout. But those are really kind of the situations there.
James, are you, are you cognizant of any folks in your office that are not impacted by this, by these compensation increases and might at least look at, you know, making sure that your office is run, you know, without too much heartburn for existing employees?
Well, I mean, overall, I'm always concerned about the entire staff that's in my office. Obviously, we have attorneys in the office and we also have support staff in the office. And you're addressing the attorneys, but you're not addressing the support staff. So, I mean, that's always a concern. And as the board knows, I, I've made that effort before regarding the support staff when I talked with the support staff about, or when I talked with the board about how to address kind of the approach to help that situation as well. Because as you can imagine, with the shortage of attorneys, the support staff takes on an extra load as well. So, I mean, I'm certainly cognizant of the two different branches of people within my office. And you're, you're looking to address one, but not the other. And, and I know that that's probably something that will be brought to my attention, that I, I certainly am aware of that. But at the end of the day, when I took office, my priority was to bring stability to the attorneys. That's been my number one focus since I took office, was to bring stability to the attorneys. It's deal with that situation first and then try and address the other concerns after that. Because if we don't have attorneys in the office, it's really hard to prosecute cases in this county. And whether you believe it or not, we've got a lot of stuff going on in this county. A lot of people like to stay in the weeds and they don't know. But for those of us that are in the office, and I see three of us right now, they know exactly what I'm talking about. If you know what's going on, you have kind of a different perspective than those outside not really knowing what exactly goes on in this county criminally. So it's always a concern of mine. I don't want to treat people differently. And I know the people that represent the union, I know, I see Trevor out there. I know Trevor is certainly aware of that concern as well. And, and I'm not, it's just at the end of the day, I have to bring stability to that part of the office and then work to take care of the other parts as, after that. Because if you don't have the attorneys, we're just in a real hard spot.
Thank you. All right. Hearing no other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those saying nay passes five zero. Thank you, everyone. Item 11, as supports on committee meetings.
Technically, it wasn't a committee meeting, but as Chair asserts, I was contacted by FEMA. They needed a location for a disaster recovery center. And it felt fitting since it was funded by a federal grant that they'd be able to use that on a zero dollar lease. So that's opening tomorrow from 1:00 to 6:00 p.m. And then all following weeks after that, it'll be Monday through Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. So that'll be FEMA at a disaster recovery center and that'll be at the certs building, 6401 Gordon Drive.
Yeah, the only thing I had was last night was the Board of Adjustment meeting. The main thing was, I just brought up, was the data mining center that's going to be built out just south of Crexchaville. So they just had some good discussions on both sides, but I was just, the decision was deferred until next month as they just gained more information on that, understand that. So, but that's all that I had to report.
Okay.
And yeah, along those lines on the, on the Bitcoin mining deal, talked to quite a few people at the Woodbury County Fair about this. You know, this kind of came up this past week that it was going to go in front of the Board of Adjustment. And there's, there's a lot of different angles here. And from what I understand, talking this morning, is that the Bitcoin mining that we have down outside of Salix is slightly different than what we have. It's going to go in potentially between Mowville and Crexchaville. And so, and that's what the Board of Adjustment and zoning does, is they have to look at each situation individually and, and, because everything, things will be different between all of them. And so that's what they did last night. And with the people that I talked with at the fair, there were pros and cons. You know, one of the things that Woodbury County REC, and we have some of the highest electric rates in the state here, these are huge, huge users of electricity. And they can lower their rates by, by selling more electricity. So these things for their bottom line is great, but we don't want to confuse that with Woodbury County REC is actively out there pushing these things. You know, it's just the fact is that it would help their bottom line, which helps the bottom line of their customers here in the county. And so I don't, I don't want any people to take that the wrong way, that anybody's advocating for this thing. And you had, you know, you have people that, whether they believe in Bitcoin or not, you know, they, they don't believe in it or they don't like the massive amount of electricity that they use that just is seemingly for nothing. I totally get that. But it seems like it was more the noise was, was kind of the issue last night.
Right. The big issue is the noise impact. And from the other data mining centers that are around the Midwest, that's always the issue, is the, is the noise and does, and can a closed loop cooling system change that? And can, can they directionally push the noise either up or out? So that's the real issue, yeah. And then there's the subfrequencies that come from the fans that are cooling that are on a subfrequency level. And so that's a concern too. So with animals, especially the cattle.
Yeah, well, and so there, there was good discussion last night, had good discussions at the fair. And I would just encourage those people, if they, you know, obviously, if they want to make their voices be heard, to show up at the next Board of Adjustment meeting and, and they will have the opportunity to do that. So the only thing I have is, Woodbury County Emergency Management has rescheduled their disaster survival training. Those were going to go on during the weeks of the flood, and so they postponed that. But they've got at least three dates down right now. They're going to start at seven o'clock. They're typically about two hours. But the next one is going to be August 13th at Western Iowa Tech. Then after that, August 20th, it will be held down at the fire station in Smithland. And then August 27th, we'll be at the fire station in Mowville. I heard great things from people that attended the one in Salix. And so I would encourage those, you know, I would encourage people to check that out if one's close to you. With the flooding that we had, a lot of that came, a lot of some of that training had to kick in in these situations. And so we, we obviously hope for the best, but we still have to plan for the worst. And Mike Montina does a great job. And so check it out. And you can follow Woodbury County Emergency Management on, on Facebook. They're very active there and they can get you more information. Thank you.
Yep. Item 12, any citizen concerns? Can kind of guess what some of these concerns will be about. So I'll just remind everyone, if you're asking the board to take action, unfortunately, tonight, we can just listen and action can come at a far, at a future date. We're also not supposed to really say where we're at or deliberate, but we can certainly receive and ask you questions.
Daniel here, 2889 Humboldt Avenue, Hornick, Iowa. Just this last week, we set up our Woodbury County Preservation Booth at the local Woodbury County Fair. And we were there all five hot days of the fair and we had a good time visiting with a lot of local Woodbury County residents that came in there. And one of our displays this year focused on an incident that happened right up in northern Iowa here in Osceola County involving an industrial wind turbine. And that incident, we believe, highlights the egregious shortfalls that our current Woodbury County Industrial Wind Ordinance has when it comes to safety setbacks that put the, the public square in the danger zone. And I have one of those posters from our display at the fair which shows what happened to that Osceola County turbine when it exploded up there in that county. And as you can see, based on the height of this turbine, it threw debris clear out, clear out here, 960 feet. Now, this is only a 225-foot tall turbine. But the survey and the, that was, and the analysis that was done of this turbine shows that the, the danger zone throw factor from this turbine, based on the height and how far it threw the debris, is a factor of 4.27 times the height of the tower. Now, to put that in perspective, for Woodbury County's potential wind turbines, which Mid American has admitted are close to 600 feet tall, that puts the potential to throw debris over 2,500 feet. And I, and so right now, you know, our resident setbacks are at 2,500 feet, but that's it. All our other setbacks are like property lines, county road right of ways. We're talking 660 feet here, guys. That, I mean, that, talk about endangering the public. 660 feet from public roads and property lines. And so some other things that we discussed at the fair with the other local, with the local residents was some decommissioning. There's other counties that are getting out there ahead of us, and they're coming up with decommissioning plans for these things if they were to be built. Now, back in 2016, Mid American bragged about building the tallest land-based wind turbine, and at that time, it was 557 feet tall. This is right out of their own, I guess, report of what those turbines have in them. One base of those turbines takes 70 truckloads of concrete, 70 truckloads. It takes 90 tons of rebar, steel rebar, which if you laid that end to end, that's 80 miles worth of rebar. I believe our Woodbury County Industrial Wind Ordinance only would require a turbine company, when they decommission these things, to remove everything down to four feet below the surface of the soil. What you guys see here, what are they going to do here? They're going to take a bulldozer and they're just going to push four foot of dirt over that and they're going to call it decommissioned. I, I think that's wrong. We've got to really look into the decommissioning language on that. One last poster here, it just highlights some of the problems we've had with industrial wind turbines throwing blades and catching on fire right here in Iowa. This is one of several that have fallen off, the entire blade right here in Ida County. Here's another one that flew across the road in Adair County, and this one's Williamsburg, Iowa, that caught on fire. So I would ask you guys to look into this. We need to look in it, look into it sooner than later. The last item of business I have here for you guys is a petition where we gathered signatures at the fair just from walk-in traffic. I will briefly read that. Says, "We, the people of Woodbury County, demand the county's commercial wind ordinance to be relevant based on information readily available. We believe new information makes our current ordinance no longer relevant and needs to be updated. We, the undersigned, would like to see at a minimum the following issues addressed: a half mile or at least four and a half times the tower height, whichever is greater from a non-participating property line; two and a half times the tower height from a participating residence; three miles from a town, county park, and airports; 40 decibels max for sound; and complete removal of all concrete, metal, and wires for decommissioning; and mandatory bolstering of county roads and infrastructure prior to any construction." I got over 160 signatures here just from the local walk-in traffic. So I would like to submit that to the board for your consideration.
I'd move to receive.
Second.
First by Taylor, second by Nelson to receive. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those saying nay passes five zero. You can hand those to Michelle if you want. Any other citizen concerns? Seeing none, coming up.
Good afternoon. Eric Nelson, 1514 Jasper, Mowville. It's come to my attention, as the year has gone past, and ironically, as farm income has decreased and has waned, activity by companies promoting wind turbines has been on the increase, not only here in Iowa, but in other states in the Midwest. And, and it was two years ago, almost exactly two years ago, I stood right here and addressed this body. And I said that, that we're fortunate here in Woodbury County, and I still believe that, that we weren't on the top of the list of the tower companies to develop here. And what I meant by that is that it would give us time to have our act together, to have how wind turbines would move into Woodbury County, if at all, and, and how they'd be regulated. And so in the ensuing, in the last two years since then, we've now seen that virtually every metric that has been shared with us since then have been grossly understated, consistently understated, which I'm, I'm not a believer in coincidences, but somehow almost all of the metrics have been understated. And as the, the individual just showed, they've been grossly understated in some cases. And I'm a big believer in trends and, and trends will have a, a way of repeating themselves. And in all likelihood, the metrics are continuing to be overstated. So as you possibly wrangle with changing some, some requirements for wind turbines, please take those things into account. That, sure, there are folks that really want to have them here, but it's you folks that are charged with the public safety and the safety of the citizens of Woodbury County. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizen concerns? Seeing none, nope, come on up.
Peter Woodman, 1847, Old Highway 141, Sergeant Blue. I just also, as I, as I mount in the community, we've been working on these wind turbines and the green energy deal for years now. And I guess I just encourage you, we've got an election coming up, we've got some of you that are moving on to other things, we've got some that are, have some competition. I would encourage you to just think about the legacy you're going to leave, you know, as you hang out in Woodbury County and rub shoulders at the restaurants and bars and walking down the street, you know, think of, of those people and your constituents and what they've been asking you to do over the years. And I thank you for, those of you that have listened and have, have heard our concerns. And I just encourage you to look at our setbacks and do what we can to protect our people. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other citizen concerns? Item 13 is board concerns. Any board concerns?
So for you guys, 2024 Housing Conference is September 4th to the 6th. That's at the Iowa Event Center in Des Moines. It's not something I'll be attending because I am moving on. But I've gone to those in the past, got some information. Somebody's going to have to take over the role of the wicker tiff. So just something to think about if, if you're planning to be here next year.
Western Iowa Regional Housing Trust Fund.
Western Iowa, the community.
Community.
Probably investments, one of the words.
Any other board concerns?
Mr. Chair, I do have a couple of items of concern to the board. One, the tax roll was certified to the treasurer yesterday from the auditor. So the treasurer will be working on getting that rollout to the taxpayers. This is 10 days earlier than last year, so we're in good shape to get those notices out in a good, timely manner. And two, in regards to the flooding, I think on the first or the second day of the flooding, our vendor for our software called and asked our vendor for our software called and asked what the extent of Woodbury County's flooding was and offered to donate to our area. So Tyler did donate $1,000 towards the funding efforts to Sulan Recovery Fund.
Very good. Thank you for mentioning that. Mr. Nelson?
I had, and I was at the fair extensively for five days. And then yesterday, I was getting phone calls and texts as well from other individuals on this subject. And so I think back to the Town Hall in Lawton, which I, I know at least one of you were there, but I, I think Jeremy, you were out of town for that. But we had this topic on the agenda back then and I don't think we thought that that was going to be, what, two hours, two and a half hours? We spent on that there. And I mean, and what's interesting is what, a lot of what was talked about in Lawton is what's still being talked about now. And so I, I think that while it's worked for us and just like it was, you know, with solar, we have an obligation to keep moving the ball downfield. And, and so I would maybe look to draft a agenda item in the coming weeks or next week. But I appreciate, you know, it was pretty miserable at the fair. There was a lot of people that, whether they're on the carbon pipeline or the windmills, that hung out in that booth and we're talking to people, engaging people. And I think that's really what, at the end of the day, what matters is that people get to be involved on these types of discussions. And so I do appreciate that. I appreciate everybody reaching out and, you know, telling me your thoughts. That's great. That's, that helps our, helps us. I don't know if any of you guys, I think it's kind of you said you've had some comments too, but I think we could work on getting something done.
Yeah, I agree. I've had a lot, many, many rural residents calling me the last couple of days about it. And I know we've been talking over the last several weeks about looking at that. And are the current ordinance, is it, is it up to par to protect the citizens for safety? So I agree. I think it warrants looking into that.
Yeah, of course I have too. And anytime you have more than one or two people contact you about anything in local government, it's a big deal. So appreciate that. Any other board concerns? We are adjourned.